Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku.
This man has got to be the most gracious man in town. He is just so humble. Watch your hand. Now you've got ink on you. You don't have it on your face, but you have ink.
No, that's because I'm left-handed.
Ah.
My sister Frances whoever.
I think you're the most humble.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, as the hour is seven o'clock, I will now call the meeting to order. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the Select Board, respective town staff, those in attendance and those watching at home, and welcome to the April 3, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board meeting. I'd like to start by introducing the board to my right, Selectman Dan Chartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
We have our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman.
Good evening.
And Selectwoman Nancy Belandra, to her left. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. And my name is Nico Papakos and Dees. Before we get into our agenda, we have a very special recognition this evening. And I'm going to have Chief Pooleen come up in a second, but if anybody in town knows Jeff Neal and his family, they know that they're very active in the community. Jeff, through his volunteer work with the Y and other volunteer work and involved in sports, has shown through the years in our community his leadership. But those of us who picked up the paper one morning last month saw Jeff take his leadership role to a whole other level and really, again, put himself last when he saw danger on an airplane that he was on. And through his leadership skills, was able to get some other passengers to help him, really prevent what could have been a tragic situation. So I'm going to have Chief Pooleen talk about Jeff and his active heroism on the airplane and also acknowledge that on March 24, Chief Pooleen and the Police Department with town staff present presented Jeff with a Citizens Award. So Chief Pooleen.
All right, good evening. Yeah, so on March 24, the Exeter Police Department presented Mr. Neal with the Citizen Award, very prestigious award. It's only the second time in the four years since I've been chief that that's been given out. Again, Mr. Neal exemplified what it meant to be a leader and a hero that day. And I know that it's not just that day in speaking with Mr. Neal, it's the way he carries himself, it's the way he presents himself. He's a very humble person, but like everyday heroes that are amongst us, when the time comes, they step right up. And, you know, a lot of people that day were quick to take out their cell phones and try to record what was about to happen. Mr. Neal actually stood up and did something about it. And that's the very important piece that got everybody else behind you going. And that's why, you know, it can't be stated enough how important that was for you to take that courageous step and standing up for you, for your wife, and for everybody on that plane. So again, thank you.
I can't tell you again how much I sincerely appreciate you taking a moment out of your busy schedule and agenda as a chair. I know how it is. You've got a lot of balance. But the fact that you would take a moment for me means absolutely the world to me. Sincerely, I appreciate you taking the time. But as I look at men in uniform, I just want to take that opportunity again to say those are the real heroes. I had a moment. These are the guys and women that have to do it on a day-to-day basis, and those who serve the community, sacrifice for the community on a regular basis. Those are the real heroes. But for this, forever, I'm indebted to the happiness you have brought me. So thank you sincerely.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. You certainly give me faith in the spirit of community and, you know, the police really, you know, our public safety rely on them. But when they say, if you see something, say something or do something, and you did, and, you know, you allowed the public safety to apprehend that individual. So thank you for showing us that when you see, when you say, when you see something, say something or do something. Thank you.
Can I also interject here? So just another thank you. I can't, I should have counted how many times friends from out of state or out of the country sent me the picture of the article. And it was just so, it was really wonderful. And, you know, of course, it took so much bravery and courage and all of that, and I want to acknowledge that. But I also want to thank you for the, you know, for the wonderful example of citizens of Exeter that you're setting for the town, the country, the world. And I really wanted to lift that up for you. It was a, it was a real, it was really exciting to get, I'm sure we all got it, but it was really nice.
Any other members of the board?
Everyone has spoken so eloquently, we'd just be repeating, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come up and offer comment to the Select Board. We do ask that if your comments are relative to the agenda items that you wait till that moment comes. We'll pause for a moment to see if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on. We do not have any proclamations or recognitions this evening. So I would ask for the Select Board to review the regular meeting minutes of March 20, 2023 and ask if there are any revisions or amendments. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the extra Select Board regular meeting minutes of March 20, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if you pass this, thank you. With no appointments this evening, we'll jump right into discussion items. And first off, we have Chief Pooleen.
Transparency, accountability, and trust. In December of 2022, the town received congressionally-directed funding to purchase our body cameras. And again, this is in huge part due to the support from Senator Shaheen. On March 22, the entire Police Department wrapped up its training and certification on our Body-Worn Camera Initiative. This included the creation and implementation of a 12-page policy, which covers officer and department responsibilities, adherence to state laws such as RSA 105D, Body-Worn Cameras 91A, Right to Know, and 570A, wiretapping and eavesdropping. They also include restrictions, exceptions, and prohibitions in data classification, retention, and destruction. The Exeter Police Department's Body-Worn Camera Program will be utilized to collect evidence, investigate allegations of misconduct, defend civil litigation, and maintain transparency. The Body-Worn Camera will be utilized by all sworn members of the department during daily performance of patrol duties. The company we chose to outfit our agency is Utility. Utility's technology supports good policy, officer training, and community relations efforts. The camera is designed to not fall off and potentially lose video in critical moments. With the patented design, the cameras are fastened into the officers' uniforms. So as you can see, I am actually wearing one now. This is, that's all you see on the camera is the lens. Essentially, it looks like a phone, but it's much more than a phone. And it goes right into its cradle, just like that. Our controllers are down, one at the belt, and then they feature unique recording functionalities. So in addition to the officers being able to activate them themselves by either tapping it or by using their device, we configured the current cameras to turn on when an officer draws their firearm from its holster, an officer begins to run, an officer engages in jostled movement, so there's motion. If they feel that they might be running, it'll turn on. If the camera is horizontal for 10 seconds, it will initiate an officer-down sequence. It will also turn on. Or when they turn on the police car lights, it will also turn on. These functionalities remove the responsibility and discretion of turning cameras on and off from officers, further increasing transparency and accountability. The footage is automatically encrypted and uploaded into the cloud to assure footage is available when we need it. We have unlimited storage capabilities on this. The video is of exactly what happens in officer-citizen interactions in an unbiased manner, assuring the narrative is true, reliable, and secure. Body-Worn Cameras are a tool that can be used to support positive policing efforts, and the camera is just one tool in a broad range of resources that the department is utilizing to support officer training, best practices, and a positive culture. By initiating this Body-Worn Camera Program, partnering with Utility, the Exeter Police Department is exhibiting its commitment to being a forward-thinking organization focused on fostering a positive relationship within the community. Already, we've already seen the benefits of it. We've had a person threaten suicide by a cop. They had their hands in their pockets, and they had a firearm in their pocket. The officers drew their weapons. They were able to use verbal commands and good de-escalation tactics, and no one was hurt. And we were also able to view that all policies and procedures were adhered to. So already, we're seeing the benefits of our Body-Worn Camera video. Just to give you just a quick idea on some of the reasons the laws against having it. So I don't have it on right now. I would let you know if I did. Officer will let anyone know they're being video recorded and audio recorded unless it's not safe to do so at that time. There may need to have them on for a call for service. So what this is right now is community caretaking. It's not a call for service. If something were to happen right now, I would then put it on. If I was called to your home for an investigation for a crime, then it would be on, you would be notified that it's on. There's certain situations where it can't be on, and those are places where you have a reasonable expectation of privacy, such as a locker room, bathroom, and your home. So you do have the right to ask the officer to turn it off in your home. The times that you cannot is if they're serving an arrest warrant or a search warrant in your home, then it stays on. And once the camera's on, unless it's one of those situations that they turned it off, it stays on for the duration of the encounter. So there's no partial recording or only recording on what someone feels they need recorded. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
I don't. This was all pretty well-vetted, I think, through our budget process, and I'm glad you've got them, and thank you for updating us on them.
Thank you. And I do want to give kind of a shout-out to Deputy Chief McCain. He worked very hard on this policy, integrating with different other agencies that already have a policy and then making it fit Exeter. And he also put together a great PowerPoint training presentation for our officers. So he did a really good job kind of spearheading this project.
Any questions or comments?
No. Good.
Chief, I'd also like to thank you for, you know, identifying funding mechanisms and also acknowledge Senator Shaheen for her efforts in helping us in that regard as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, as we promised last time we met, we have Attorney Joe Driscoll from Mitchell Law Group here to weigh in on Swayze Parkway, the warrant article that passed in March of 2022, and also the citizens petition a few weeks ago. Attorney Driscoll, good evening.
Good evening, Chair, board members. Again, I'm Joe Driscoll. I'm Town Council from the Mitchell Municipal Group. Thanks for having me here this evening. As I understand it, we have a few questions about, in essence, the interplay between two town meeting votes. Little background, and obviously, if I'm too long-winded, somebody tell me to shut up. But in 2022, there was the initial vote, and the effect of that vote, it's a little interesting based on the circumstances of Swayze itself. It is deemed a charitable trust, the property, as well as the money that funds it. So it's a little different than what a discontinuance would have been. If a town votes to discontinue a road, that vote discontinues a road. Okay, so that's statutory, that's normal process. What you had to do here was seek some approval for that, because there was the potential that this was viewed as some modification of a trust that funds that park and funds that road use. So there was the condition placed in it of obtaining approval from both the Rockingham County Probate Court and the New Hampshire Division of Charitable Trusts to close and discontinue that road. So by sort of operation of law, you had step one, the discontinuance was lined up, said, okay, these functions must be fulfilled. Obviously, you have the other conditions as well as to the paved portion. We can discuss that too, if you'd like. But in terms of the discontinuance, you needed the approval of charitable trusts and you needed the approval of the probate court. We spoke at length with the Director of Charitable Trusts. Of course, halfway through the process, a new director comes about, so you have to kind of start over. They were in agreement with the effort, and the petition for a cypray was filed with the probate court along with an order for that to happen. So the judge signed off on that order a few months ago, finalizing the discontinuance that the town's action at the 2022 town meeting had already had, discontinuing it at that point. You then had, on this past ballot, you had your petition to warrant article. And that article, based on its language, is to keep the roadway in Swayze Parkway completely open to motorized pleasure vehicles in a one-way direction. The roadway was no longer open at the time that the town acted on this article. So there is no ability for this board to keep it open. Different language needed to be used to recreate the road, relay out the road, in order for that to have had an effect. So based on the legal history of this, again, operation of law, if in 2022, there was no need for the cypray petition, that town vote that day would have discontinued it. But there was the conditions subsequent that were necessary. So I hope that offers some clarity. I'm happy to take any sort of questions on this issue, but bottom line is, this new vote seeks an action that this board doesn't have authority to do because the road's been discontinued.
Thank you, Attorney Driscoll. Any questions or comments at this time from the board?
No, just thank you for coming and explaining the process and where we're at with this.
Anytime.
Mr. Dean, the pavement is still town property, so obviously, the upkeep will continue like plowing and so forth by Public Works, correct?
That's our intent.
Okay. And I know there was some question about particularly the farmer's market or any other events that the Select Board would permit. Select Board still has the authority to permit the farmer's market and events on the Parkway. And much like when the governor issued his emergency order and the roadway was closed, we were still able to permit the farmer's market, as well as, I believe, there were one or two events during COVID. That would remain the same, correct?
That's correct. Up to the public if there are any questions while we have Attorney Driscoll here. Go ahead. Just if you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Dwayne Staples, 33 Ashbrook Road. Transparency, I'm also the Chair of the Swayze Parkway Trustees. So in the language of the 22 vote, it says that the road is going to be discontinued to the pavilion. So I want a clarification of, is it the Water Street end of the pavilion? So the pavilion is not in the discontinued road? Or is it to the other side of the pavilion so that the pavilion is in the discontinued
That's a good question.
Thank you. The language in the article was to close and discontinue Swayze Parkway as a public roadway from Water Street to the pavilion. I don't know if that offers the bearings that allows you to answer that question.
So to the pavilion, to me, would mean to the pavilion.
I, yeah, my own take on that was that we should work with the Parkway Trustees to figure that out, because "to" is somewhat vague, although not that vague. So I think we should cooperate with them and find out how that should work.
Yeah, because as Selectman Chartran said, "to," it could be "to the end of," and that was just, you know, implied. And part of the reason for closing it down, or the request to close it down, was so that families could enjoy the Parkway and the concerts. So stopping the vehicular traffic at the Water Street side doesn't follow along with the spirit of that. So I'd like to have the, that's something for the trustees to take into consideration.
I think further to that, in addition to working with the trustees, also working with Public Works and Public Safety, obviously, is going to be a roundabout or some sort of turning mechanism for those coming in from New Fields Road. And that may be an issue of safety as to where that spot would be. So I would be interested in not only working with the trustees, but Public Safety and Public This is Ruffner.
Hi, Florence Ruffner, 5 Pine Street, and a former Swayze Park Trustee. My concern is if you bring it just to where the pavilion starts, and you have kids playing on there, which they do a lot, you know, they like to run around the walkway and everything, you wouldn't want cars pulling up in front of there because it would be dangerous. So maybe if it could be to the other side of it, at least, just my comment.
I appreciate that, and I think working with Public Works and Public Safety will allow us to create something that is in the best interest for everybody's safety. Any other questions or comments?
Jerry Hamel, 17 Little Pine. I think the clarity on where the road stops really doesn't make, quite honestly, much of a difference, because in the past, you know, the Parkway can always be closed at any event further than the pavilion. The roadway here has always been closed, so it gives the flexibility to go close it at the metal shed if actually that's what was desired. My thing is, what I'm looking at is, the warrant article was very specific as far as vehicles, non-motorized vehicles. And it even went to the point of going beyond non-motorized vehicles, dispelling out which vehicles you could have in the Parkway other than non-motorized vehicles. And so it does say maintenance and emergency vehicles only. So I don't see where that, where it was written, gives the ability to bring other vehicles in. Farmer's Market, we've got the regatta that the Phillips Exeter Academy does, there's a lot of events that people do bring their vehicles in. So that was one of my biggest concerns, the way that was written. And it was voted on the town on that basis, so that's a major concern. And the other thing that I'm actually looking at is the disability. In the CyPress report and the, it does say that it will be mobility, people with nobilities, they will have a way to get in there into the Parkway. But it doesn't, it isn't clear on where it is. Does it mean only on the point that's going to be on the north end? Or will they be able to still come in on the closed end with a vehicle if they can't walk? So there's a couple of issues that are really, quite honestly, they're kind of gray to me. And the mobility, obviously, is one big one. And there again, not having any vehicles, that's another one. So those are my, two of my biggest concerns. Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing those concerns, Mr. Hamel. And I think, I guess I'm not as concerned with your first concern, which was the Select Board still has the authority to permit something like the farmer's market or an event. So when you're, when you're speaking of the Parkway being closed but allowing a permanent event to come in, obviously, the Powder Cank is another example. We have nonprofits that have festivals, we have other art-like events. The Select Board still has the authority to permit these events. And obviously, if we're permitting the event, much like we do now, much like we did when it was closed entirely during the governor's emergency order, I think, you know, it's reasonable to think that they'll be able to bring their gear in and out. And then your second concern, I'm not as concerned about, because now that we have clarification from Attorney Driscoll, we can start working on how we're going to go about doing this. And we will work with the trustees. We've already pledged to do that. We pledged to do that the minute this was passed back in March of 22. We will work with Public Safety. We'll work with the town planner. We'll work with folks from the town that come together. I anticipate putting together some sort of a committee to generate ideas as to how we can make this fair and equitable to everybody. So if you're asking tonight how that's going to be done, well, I don't think anybody can answer that. But I think that the board is committed But I think that the board is committed to achieving what the voters wanted in March of '22 while taking into consideration that we want to make it as fair and equitable to everybody.
Yeah, and just to augment that, I mean, one of the reasons I voted no on the citizens' petition on the 23 ballot, and I said this out at the Riverwoods Forum, I trust this Select Board to work with all parties to come up with and with a solution that is equitable and allows the most access for everyone, so that no one is disadvantaged. This is, this is a good Select Board. Part of the reason why I wanted to come back and serve on this board is that all these individuals are outstanding, and they're equitable, and they listen very carefully. And they don't bring, they leave their agendas outside the room. So I really trust that this board is going to be able to work with the trustees, Public Safety, Public Works, and citizens of this town of all different beliefs, to come up with the ideal solution to make this a better parkway. So.
I just, I don't want to cut any additional public comment on that, but I do want to recognize Mr. Staples, sorry, and the citizens of the petition and the people who voted for it. I just, and I'm glad the attorney's here tonight so that they all understand that their vote was not being ignored. It's not. But as our town attorney has stated, what our options are, and we will do everything we can, as Mr. Chartran said, to proceed and take everyone's consideration into account. So thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Well, thank you all for those that came up. Thank you, Attorney Driscoll. And Mr. Staples, you know, we've said this before, but the trustees, you know, when we put this on the agenda, will always be invited to work with us. And I think that, you know, the same, I appreciate what Mr. Chartran said about the Select Board, but I can't say enough about the Swayze Park trustees. And you, all three of you have worked very collaboratively and cooperatively with this board, and we look forward to continuing that in the future. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to our next agenda item, which has been a regular agenda item since January, and will continue to be here for the future, I believe, the Squam Scott Siphon Project. We have our interim DPW Director, Mr. Paul Velasic, here to give an update. But first, I'd like to share with folks at home what we've been working on the last week after our last Select Board meeting. Recognizing, recognizing that folks have legitimate concerns and questions about this project and may not be able to have access to the Select Board meetings. Mr. Dean and I first wrote an op-ed piece in the paper, which gave pretty much a very thorough update as to how the project started, some of the difficulties that we have encountered, and how we are looking to go forward, emphasizing the confidence that we have in our staff and the fact that while this project has become increasingly complicated, it is not unattainable. Thank you to the Vice Chair, Selectwoman Cowan, for coming up with an idea to film a video. And a video we made with the help of Mr. Bob Klowacki, who I can't thank enough. Mr. Velasic, Mr. Dean, and I put together a 15, 16-minute video to talk about the project and to inform folks as to what's going on and where we hope to go in the future. My understanding is this video was on social media, was on our Town of Exeter Facebook page, was on Channel 22.
Yes.
And on the website, maybe?
Yeah.
On the website. But we understand that there are some folks at home that watch our Select Board meetings religiously and may not have access to the social media. So if I may indulge the board and those of you here in person, we are going to watch the video. And then Mr. Velasic will give you an update for the last couple of days.
We need to get a dimmer on there.
That was your job, chief. Hello, Nico Power Post in Dees. Are you ready? Yes, thank you. And the Chair of the Exeter Select Board. With me this afternoon are Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, and our interim Public Works Director, Mr. Paul Velasic. Today, we'd like to give the community an update regarding the Squam Scott River Siphons Project. Many residents have reached out to the Town Manager's Office, Public Works Office, and to the Select Board, specifically with questions about the project, the challenges, and the timeline. We felt the best way to answer these questions would be to provide you with a very easy-to-watch video in which Mr. Velasic will go through the timeline, the intent of the project, and some of the challenges we faced and where we're going forward. As you know, the Select Board has been updated regularly at our Select Board meetings since January, when Mr. Velasic and the consultants have given an update, and we anticipate that that will be the case moving forward for the time being. The board is incredibly confident that the staff has utilized town resources to the fullest extent by working with third-party experts, reviewing alternative options, analyzing physical and financial risks. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Velasic, who's going to talk about the scope of the project, the purpose, some of the challenges that we faced, and ultimately the timeline.
So the project is to replace two failing siphons, two eight-inch siphons. Currently, they have water infiltrating into the siphons, and also to increase capacities for the north end of town, Portsmouth Avenue area. The solution was to drill, directionally drill, three siphon barrels across the river. Those sizes were two 10-inch pipes and a 12-inch pipe. Funding for the project, well, there's many funding partners. Back in FY '20, there was an SRF loan for $1.4 million with 10% forgiveness, $600,000 in congressionally-directed spending, $180,000 in state ARPA funds, and $420,000 in the town ARPA funds. Project went out to bid, and the contractor, the successful contractor, his bid amount Construction activity started on December 1st, 2022, with the contractor mobilizing to the site. And then the subcontractor, the drilling contractor, mobilized about a week and a half later. On December 19th, with a directional drill attempt from the mill side of the river, heading over to the Swayze Parkway side, obstruction was hit approximately 80 feet out. The barrel was relocated, and approximately 100 feet out, ledge was hit again. Now, with that, you might ask, was there any geotechnical work for the project? And the answer is yes. Was there any actual geotechnical, new geotechnical work in the river? The answer there is no. Boreings were conducted at both the jacking and receiving pits, where the engineers had proposed those, but also there was existing data from when the siphons were originally installed. And the, and like I said, it was about 60 years ago. And the location of the existing siphons is about 200 feet to the north downstream from the proposed new siphons. With the ledge being hit, there was a change of conditions, and the contractor and the subcontractor had to re-mobilize equipment that can drill through ledge. And rock drilling began on January 9th, 2023. And after several attempts, ranging from January 9th to January 30th, a pilot hole was finally started on the 31st, January 31st, and a six-inch pilot hole was completed. Now, let me just pause there for a second. And the way that the drill, drilling operations would be is they would have this drill head go through the rock, drilling a six-inch pilot hole. Once they get through the other side, then the hole will need to be enlarged to 12-inch. And then once the 12-inch hole was reamed, then it would have to go to 18-inch. And then from there, the polyethylene pipe can be pulled through the boring. Right after the successful pilot hole that was drilled from the Swayze Parkway side over to the mill side was completed on February 16th, the back reaming operation also was started. That was being pulled from the mill side. Now, with the back reaming activity, there was some fluid release. And there is this clay betonite lubricant that they put in the hole to help with the grinding operations, and also to help remove some of the grindings that they're making in the hole and then taking that out of the hole. And the fluid, first of all, is not toxic to the environment. As I mentioned, it was clay betonite. A fluid release happens when the fluid under pressure works its way up through the soil and then ends up on the surface or in the bottom of the river. So it's because of that fluid release, the contractor then relocated to the Swayze Parkway side once again to start the 12-inch reaming operation from that side. And that relocation was done on February 20th, 2023. Then on, three days later, February 23rd, the shaft broke on the drilling operation. The drilling subcontractor suggested that it is unlikely that we'll be able to remove the reamer, and that a possible fix might have been to weld sleeves together from the mill side and to push it out from that side of the river. The likelihood of success of a removal of the reamer was very low, and it was going to be expensive to, potentially to the tune of about $400,000. On March 21st, the subcontractor then performed the extraction of the failed drill rods. The break occurred about 103 feet from the drill, and which makes the potential excavation, if we were going to try to dig down and reattach at that location, approximately 35 to 40 foot deep. And we have estimates from the contractor suggesting that the cost of that would be close to 3/4 of a million dollars. So moving forward, where are we? Number one, I want the viewers to know that there is a contingency plan in place in case of the failure of the existing siphons. And that would mean creating a pump station above ground, pumping the effluent through a force main that would be laid out on the mill's lawn area as it heads over to String Bridge Road, and then across String Bridge to Water Street. The contractor has been doing this work and not getting paid to date because of the time and materials. So the town is executing a change order, and the change order is in the amount of approximately $716,000. We are also waiting for our consultants and their subconsultants to document the failed drilling equipment. And we anticipate a memo from our consultant for understanding if we can possibly perform two siphons instead of three, with both of those being 12 inches. We got to make sure that the low flows and both the future flows can be accommodated with that. Another task that we are trying to undertake now also is to try to understand the ledge profiles in the area. And we are looking for a proposal from the consultancy if there is a way to map that ledge profile. There was already an attempt that was done on February 20th, where this seismic mechanism was towed behind a boat in an effort to try to understand ledge in the area, but that turned out to be unsuccessful because of the bubbles in the soil. Prior to the shaft breaking and the reamer stuck in the river, we had an estimated cost of about $3.5 million for the contractor then to complete one 12-inch barrel across the river. The next attempt for a 12-inch barrel, the contractor and the subcontractor is suggesting more substantial equipment for the work, and they've already given us the new daily rates for those. With that, there'd be also a consideration for a conductor barrel to be installed. And this is so that if a, the drill mechanism had to be removed from the river, that it would be able to be re-threaded through this conductor barrel to make sure that we are hitting the same opening in the ledge. And as we sit here, we are waiting for some estimates on the new board with collaboration between both our consultant and our contractor.
So how do we move forward? Although the project methods have changed, the project goals have not. The town needs to replace the existing deteriorated sewer siphons, and we need to increase sewer capacity for future town growth. The challenging riverbed conditions have forced the town to review all alternatives. We are working diligently with the engineering team, contractors, and legal counsel to understand all potential financial implications and determine a path forward. At this time, we can only speculate on the cost of the project because a definitive path forward is still being determined. However, we do expect changes will result in a cost increase. The increase will not be the estimated $3.5 million for a single sewer siphon times three. The reason is that the $3.5 billion estimate includes the contractor's cost to change equipment, plan for the changing conditions, and drill through 800 feet of rock. These increased costs would not be the same for barrels two and three because we now have more accurate data as to what the drill team will be drilling through to complete the project. Various options are being researched, such as reducing the project to a two-barrel system or drilling a hole large enough to support two siphons in a single drill hole. Any change in the system design will need to be approved by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services as they regulate sewer capacity regulations. There is an urgency to repair the existing sewer siphons due to their condition and the potential for collapse. The project may have to be phased to meet our final goals. However, we are still working to determine an alternative plan. However, we know whatever is proposed will take into consideration the concerns of our residents.
As you can see, this project is challenging, but I assure you that all options, costs, and timelines are being investigated. This project has become more complicated than we expected, but it is not unattainable. Town staff and the Select Board remain committed to working to determine the most effective and responsible path forward regarding this project. The best way for residents to stay updated on this project The best way for residents to stay updated on this project is to tune into select board meetings, reach out to Public Works, contact the town manager's office, or reach out to the select board. We hope this video has been helpful, and we thank you for watching.
I haven't listened to it. I haven't seen the pictures.
Yeah, I was very happy to see the photos. Thank you.
I can't thank Paul Colack enough for the time and effort that he put into not only filming the three of us, but getting all of that other footage.
And so quickly.
The graphs and everything, and he really worked very quickly.
I think Molly, what'd you say, Molly gave you the idea, and within a few days, you guys were on it. So I thank you very much, and Ross and Paul.
Teamwork.
Yes. Very important to have done that. I'm much appreciated.
So a critical member of our team, Mr. Paul Velasic, interim Public Works Director, with an update since the video was made.
I'd like to start at the very end of the video because the last time I was giving you an update, the information on pulling the drill rods wasn't known. So we found that out after, and that's probably the first time you heard about it was on the video there. So the break happened 103 feet from the drilling mechanism on the Swayze Parkway side. And as you are directionally drilling, you've got quite the angle before you level out. So the further away that you went from the drill rig, the deeper you were. And we were hoping that the break happened closer than 103 feet because of the depths. And we already know that we'd be digging through nasty soils or very clay-type soils and have lots of water because there's the Swansbury River right there. So we would have to dig a little further than 103 feet also because you really got to go to the end of the drill rod there threaded together, not just at the break. You had to go even a little further to get to that. So when you're out that distance, we were estimating 35, 40 feet. And that came with a real steep price tag to attempt in a repair on that $750,000. So with that, what did we find? We found that the break happened, and I'm reading my notes here to make sure I get this right, a shear compression failure. And there was also a little bit of failure in the lateral wall, too. And what could have caused that? It could have been some extra pressure was exerted on that side of the reamer, which helped cause some of that failure. So what have we learned so far? That's not a good attempt to try to get down to that. Our consultants have been reviewing the hydraulic calculations to see if number-wise, the two-barrel system, two 12-inch barrels instead of two 10s and a 12 could possibly work. And hydraulically, we think it can. We would probably have to run our pump station at Webster a little differently to do a little bit of flushing activity and stuff once a day, but we think it would work. So the next task for trying to reduce the number of barrels then would have to be discussions with New Hampshire DES because it's one of their regulations that require this three-barrel system. So what else did we learn since the last time, too? The video pointed out that we were trying to potentially find a corridor where no ledge was. And just the permitting alone for those attempt for additional borings would be at least six months long. So it's not like there would be a quick turnaround if we tried to evaluate a path where there is less ledge or no ledge. So where does that leave us with the cost? The video also says that contractor and the drilling contractor or subcontractor are suggesting some more substantial equipment. And with that, the rates are increased, too. So we were running with before the reamer got stuck underneath the river of an estimate of about $3.5 million to complete the project with just one barrel. And this means we still have to figure out what to do with another barrel, but we were running with the figure of $3.5 million. So this next reaming operation, and the contractor now has supplied us with at least an estimate, it's not a quote, it's an estimate of what we would be looking at, to drill a new bore across the river. And the figure is roughly $1.4 million. What does that do with the total price? Well, before I get to that, one of the items that we had not covered previously when we were like doubling the cost, then it was 3.5 million. The engineers now added a contingency also so that some of the smaller items can be accounted for here without much disruption of the bottom line number. So the previous numbers did not have a contingency factor put into it. So the number that we are working with now is $4 million. That includes that contingency, includes the more substantial equipment. And we always want to compare this to like, you know, what was the original contract bid before we even knew what ledge was out there? And that was the figure of $1.63 million. So right now, we are estimating moving forward on a new bore through completion of that one to be $4 million.
Including the 1.6 or in addition to the 1.6?
No, including the 1.6. This is the new estimated cost for just one complete barrel, of which then we could either go for another barrel after that, or we could pause to see where we're at, where the finances are, that sort of thing.
Mr. Just back on the board, what do you think?
Well, I like what Nico said at the end of the video. You know, these are complications we didn't foresee, but this project is necessary and it is still attainable, and I have no doubt about that. And it is necessary. You told me at our last meeting that over one-third of our sewer flows each day go through these siphons. So it's necessary, and it is attainable, and we will attain it. It's not easy, but we'll do it.
Agreed.
And if you want to bet against us, I'll take that bet.
I guess my only question is, what kind of timeframe are we looking at now?
I don't have the answer for that one right now. The contractor is waiting for us, and they've gone to do other work, too. So that'll be a discussion we'll need to have with them.
Anything else, Mr. Dean?
No, just when the time comes, I think we would recommend a singular meeting of the board, like a special meeting, basically. On occasion, we have those. I think this is a good topic to have one of those meetings, to vet all of the different options that are available to us. And that's something to be planned for the near future.
Do you have a date or timeline in mind for this meeting?
I don't as of tonight, but I can work with you to get a date once we have a chance to sit down and talk about it.
Would you like to meet before our next meeting, which is the 17th?
I think that's what we were angling for, yes.
Okay. We can do that. Obviously, the more notice we can give the board, that would be great. I'm going to repeat myself again. I know the answer, but I just want to hear it one more time. The $4 million includes the 1.6 that was originally quoted, correct? Originally reserved for.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. If we need to appropriate another $3-plus million or $2-plus, can't do math that night, we'd have to have a special town meeting to do that.
That is a possibility. You know, obviously, we're looking at all of the different ways that we could go about funding this, and I think you're right that that is a very distinct possibility. However, as Mr. Velasic has said repeatedly, we're still at a speculative stage, and there's no sense until we know what we're going to need. And we'll continue to keep folks updated and hopefully, moving forward, you know, they'll watch select board meetings, any other communication, and responsible journalism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Assistant Town Manager, Human Resources Director Melissa Roy to give us an update on our various vacancies.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Velasic, thank you.
Yes, thank you. In the packet, you guys have a listing of all of the current vacancies, and I think it was requested last time, that I note how long those positions have been vacant for. So you have that department-by-department position, and then how long it's been vacant for. I can answer any questions. You know, we are making progress, although I know it doesn't seem like it from this list. We still continue to struggle in our water sewer street crew or water sewer heavy equipment operators and assistant town engineer. We just had our engineering tech give notice that person is having a family change, so we'll be losing them. And we're getting interviews in, and we're getting people to come interview for some of the positions, but we're losing people as well. So it is somewhat of a constant in and out. But I would say that pretty much everyone in the seacoast is seeing that right now. So we were fully staffed in police and fire about a month or two ago. Sorry, as I topple over, it's been one of those days. And now it looks like we're going to be down right now. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Roy?
No, I think the trouble hiring municipal employees, especially in the Department of Public Works, is not just a seacoast problem.
Oh, no.
Every select board person I know who's a state rep is having the same problem. We're kind of trying to deal with each other. You got a police person?
Yeah, there's a lot of poaching happening.
Yeah, it's across the state. I did see a succession webinar a few weeks ago, and it was up north. And yeah, it's everywhere. So thank you for your efforts, and I know you're working on it.
I am. I want to thank all of the department heads, too, that are dealing with short staff and making really hard decisions on what to prioritize, and they're keeping all of the lights on and all of the residents safe. So it's not easy doing it with limited staff, but they're doing a fantastic job.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for saying that, yes. We're very fortunate with the employees we have that step up and take those extra roles on when needed, and it is very much appreciated.
I think, you know, Selectwoman Gilman's right, it's not exclusive to Exeter, New Hampshire, or New England. I mean, it's, and the problem we face is we have, you know, Massachusetts right across the border, and the pay scales there are, you know, even with the state income tax, the pay scales there are significantly higher. And I do, particularly with public safety, both police, fire, and public works, I mean, it seems we bring somebody in and two more people leave. And I think those three departments in particular have done a wonderful job keeping folks in town safe despite shortages in labor. And just this winter, I mean, Public Works did a wonderful job considering how many people they were down. As you move forward, and I know you've been working with Mr. Dean, and I know you've been working with the department heads, and you've reached out to MRI, but anything this board can do to help you be creative in terms of not only recruiting but retaining staff, please feel free to come with updates or just to have us help you, you know, brainstorm because it's going to take more, particularly with work-life balance and post-COVID. I think we're going to need to be creative. And I know you and Mr. Dean are still working on the reclassification study.
We are, yeah.
I know the siphons have sort of interrupted that a little bit, but I know that update will be forthcoming soon, so.
It will, and I appreciate that. We're batting around some ideas that, you know, I think we would love to have a chat about at some point. I really appreciate you talking about retaining staff. We have a lot of staff that have stepped up, like you said, and are doing a lot more than they normally do, and we don't want to burn them out. So finding that balance will be really key to keeping everybody here, so.
Well, in the near, near future, we will be establishing a date very shortly for our goal-setting session, and perhaps this could be a topic of conversation. We could start thinking from now in terms of ideas we can help.
That would be great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Tovey from Parks and Rec, back again. Good evening.
All right, so all of you should have gotten the memo in your packet, but just to summarize this, and before I do that, obviously Greg was unable to attend tonight. He's been working on this primarily himself, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions to the best of my ability. So we are looking to apply for the Community Center Investment Program. For those viewing, this program aims to provide $20 million in grant resources to eligible entities to support infrastructure improvements to community spaces across the state, and we'd be looking to apply for this to help with renovations at Tenhampton Road. We feel that Tenhampton is a good fit because applications for this project with the following activities are prioritized: serve target populations, show the greatest need, likely to have a significant impact on the community; reinvest in the public physical infrastructure; revitalize target areas; encourage the development of effective and durable collaborations; advance significant energy efficiency and renewable elements; and demonstrate readiness and capacity. So again, we feel we hit all these priorities and more. Additionally, we've also been awarded the CDFA, which is the Financing Authority for this grant, their Clean Energy Grant for a Level Two Energy Assessment of the building. So we're moving along with this, and we hope to have the select board's approval to pledge some ARPA funds, which I'm sure we'll get into in just a bit. But there is a budget breakdown here. We hope to apply for $809,332 through the Community Center Investment Program. You have your budget there in the memo. With this grant, there is a 15% cash match, and in that 15%, you could also include hard matching funds. So for example, the $25,800 that we've allocated to do some of the renovations at Tenhampton Road already. So with that match, we were looking, as the 15%, we were looking to go a little bit over to 15% just to make our application a little bit more stronger and hopefully get that. So. So out of that 15%, we're looking at more of a 20% match, and that would include $75,000 from the Rec Revolving Fund, $150,000 from Town of Exeter ARPA Funds, as I mentioned, the $25,800 that we are working with a contractor right now to do some of those renovations, and then the $1,200 that the town has contributed for the Level 2 Energy Assessment. And that grant I had mentioned, we got $3,600 for. Let's see here, the deadline for the grant is approaching rapidly. It's April 21st. We're working with Donna Lane to write the grant. She's requested to have questions answered by this Thursday, so a little bit of a time crunch, but we've already started working on all those answers, and we're tightening that up, so we have a very strong application for that. It goes without saying that if we're not awarded the grant, then we're not going to be expending any of the ARPA funds or any money out of the revolving fund. Understandably, there are other large projects in towns, too, so we are open to working with the board on, you know, whether that could be out of the Park Improvement Fund or impact fees. I'll let you guys kind of converse and figure that out, which direction you would like to go, if this is something that the board would like to move forward with.
I was going to ask you to come up to the podium with Mr. Tovey, if you would.
So one thing I just, one thing I'd like to mention is that Greg and myself and Donna Lane went through the process of putting this in for CBDG, and although we were not awarded CBDG money for this project, they did reach out to us and felt like this was a good project for this grant round. So we received some pretty positive feedback when we went through the walkthroughs and all of that, but I think you said there was 180 communities just on a single call. At this time, there's 20 million. So that's the reason why we were looking to make our application look as strong as possible. It's exactly what this grant is for, and we have a lot of the information from our initial CBDG application. So we're in a, although it's last minute, we've done a lot of the work prior, knowing that this was coming, so.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I wholeheartedly embrace this project, and, you know, you've brought this before us in the past. I really applaud the efforts going after the grant money. The reason I wanted Ms. Roy close by is I'm stuck, and I think going, increasing the cash match to 28% or somewhere in there is a very good idea. I'm stuck on the ARPA fund amount because I know you're going to come looking for a little bit more in the near future, and we have some other things in town going on. So could you just remind the board where we are with leftover ARPA funds and how much time we have to expend them?
Absolutely. So we have $736,000 left in ARPA funds that needs to be obligated by FY '24 and spent by '26. We've had some requests for upgrades to town hall chairs and different things that we have to take a look at, but so it's a good amount of money, but it's not any, you know, all money is good money, but it isn't, you know, millions of dollars that we have left in the ARPA funding. This is a really fantastic opportunity because it's going to double, or in triple, actually, the amount of money, but I do understand your concern about ARPA. So I think that's a very valid feedback, valid question, and if we can at least get to 15% so that we can put in for it, and then you guys can decide how far along you'd like to go from there.
Are there any other sources of funding, like you mentioned, the, I know Mr. Bisson pretty much went through half of the Parks Improvement
Yeah, so I think
Fund last week?
Well, that was good planning, right? He's getting ready for a short season. Park and Rec has a short season to get things done. So, yeah, we can have a discussion as to whether this would qualify for the capital reserve, I always say this wrong, the Parks Improvement Capital Reserve Fund, and I think that it would. Unfortunately, Greg is sick today, so David did say that there was an opportunity to have that discussion, but I, from an outside perspective, think that as long as there is not an emergency coming down the pipe, which I would imagine if there was, it would have been brought up in his previous presentation to the board, that taking some of the money from that fund would be a very wise decision if that was how you so choose to move forward.
Thoughts from the board?
Mr. Chair, if we were to, sorry, I can't do the math in my head. If we were to just get to the minimum 15% match, what would the town's contribution need to be?
Do you have that?
On my laptop, David's going to do it real quick.
Thought Russ was going to beat me to it.
Oh.
You want to wager bet on this one?
No, I don't bet against Russ. I will take that bet on the siphon, though. Someone's betting against us.
About $135,000.
There we go.
Could you cobble that together without tapping ARPA?
Could we cobble it together without ARPA? No. I don't know that we could, and I'll tell you why. The Recreation Revolving Account, you don't want to drain it because it is there for an emergency. I'll give you an example, and emergency may not be the right word. Let's say the pool this summer, and it rains all summer. We don't bring the revenue in, so we have to have enough money to still pay our lifeguards because we have to hire our staff. So some of our programming is weather-dependent, it's participation-dependent, and so good planning for the Parks and Rec Department is to have a balance to prepare itself if a program or programs don't run well. So there is money in the Rec Revolving Account, but I would not, in my personal opinion, make the suggestion to drain it all the way down because you do need to protect yourself for those emergencies. So right now, we have approximately $75,000 coming from Rec Revolving. Russ, remind me, impact fees, I think we said 36?
36,000.
So again, it's really challenging without knowing Greg's plans for that, but if we were able to take some from there and then some from the park, I think there would still be a delta, but it could certainly be a lot less.
Less than the?
Yeah, the 150.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I assume that another possible use for ARPA funds is the siphon project, potentially, or no?
It could be, yeah.
Yeah. I would be very hesitant to
Yep.
To push ahead with something, given that that is our number-one thing on our agenda right now.
Yeah, I'm with Dan on that one. I really want to be careful.
But I would like to take advantage of this opportunity.
Yes.
So what I would be willing to do, matching Mr. Bisson and yours entrepreneurial spirit, is to just get to that minimum 15%, get the application in, and let's take our chances that way.
So Russ, I don't have my paperwork in front of me, but want to do some quick math for us?
Yeah, so I have 75K revolving funds, 25K Parks Improvement Fund, and then 36,000 in impact fees.
And what does that give us?
Gives you 136.
So that gets you to the 15%?
Gets you to the 15% threshold.
I think that's the way to go, given where we are right now, some other priorities.
And that would?
But that's just my opinion.
So what would happen if there is a rain out summer, and we don't have the fees that come in? Would we be able to get the funds to cover that as a backup plan?
So that's in Rec Revolving. That's the reason we did not suggest to spend more than 75,000.
Right, we have a fund balance of 200,000 in Rec Revolving.
I think it's like 180 audited, something like that, yeah. So we wanted to make sure to protect the town and the residents so that rec programming would still happen if there was an emergency.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
In the matching cash match, you're proposing to use the 25-plus thousand that we've already spent, and that's acceptable to include money that's been spent before the grant is awarded?
So David and Greg went through the webinars and information, and as long as it is going towards the improvement of the building that we're going in, and I think there was a timeline after January 1st.
Yep.
And so that would have been done after January 1st. This is a pretty quick turnaround grant, actually. We put in, we find out in June, and then they want it completed in six months. That's pretty unusual.
Start the work in six months.
Start the work in six months. We don't typically see grants happen that quickly, but they're looking to turn it around fairly quickly.
But yes, that 25.8 could go towards the 15% or 20%, whatever it is, so that is something to calculate in there as well.
And there is one thing for us to consider, and I understand where we're going to and trying not to use the ARPA funds, but when you have a competitive grant like this, the more you put forward saying we're committed to this project, the higher up you go on the list.
Yeah, no, I understand that. That was clear in the presentation. I'm just reluctant, given.
Yeah.
Is there any other places we could find some money to get to that 28% without touching ARPA? Or, no, I know.
What's the ARPA total again?
736.
Russ, can you run the numbers? This is 75. You didn't include the 25.8, right?
I did not.
Could you include that?
So we're up to 161?
So that's the 75, the 25.8, and?
36K in impact fees, 25K Parks Improvement Funds.
All right, and that total again was?
161.
Would that be an increase of the 15%?
It would be.
Yeah.
Yes, do you know what the?
The 15% threshold is 135.
Okay.
And where would all that take you again?
So 161 would be?
16, 17.
Seventeen percent. 736 left?
736.
Would the board want to consider taking 30 grand from ARPA?
To get it to 20?
I would.
Yeah, I would do that.
I'd also like to add, obviously, if we don't get the grant, it just, it will go right back into ARPA and
That's clear.
All of that, but.
Yeah, no, I just, I think we need to be very conservative with that.
I agree. I would be comfortable with 30.
Okay. When you make a motion, just would you mind if you're so inclined to list all of the different funding mechanisms?
Yeah, I know, I started writing it out.
Just to make sure that we're okay?
My notes are all
So Mr. Dean? I'm happy to
Dollars on the fly here.
So it's 75 from Rec Revolving.
Correct.
30 from ARPA. The 25.8 previously expended, and then, Mr. Dean, 30?
Six.
Six from impact fees.
Yep. And?
25 from Parks Improvement Funds.
Okay. And who's going to end up signing this? Is that you or Mr. Bisson?
I would do that.
You would do that? All right. Let me give this a crack.
It's your superpower. Molding motions.
So I would entertain a motion to authorize the Park and Rec Department to apply for the Community Center Investment Program to include a cash match broken down as follows: 75,000 from the Recreation Revolving Fund, 30,000 from the Town of Exeter ARPA Funds, 25,800 from previously expended funds, 36,000 from Impact, Parks and Rec impact fees, and 25,000 from Park Improvement Funds, and further authorize the Town Manager to sign all appropriate paperwork.
So moved.
And I will second that.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Teamwork.
Appreciate it.
That was teamwork.
Thank you.
Okay, our last discussion item should be fairly quick. It's more or less setting our select board goal-setting session. In years past, we've conducted this on a Saturday morning. I know last year, we did a Monday afternoon because of conflicts and schedules. I'm open to consider either, so I'll leave it to discussion.
So Saturdays are typically a workday for me.
Okay.
Just throwing that out. I can try to maneuver a day off, but it'd be better if we could do it another day.
They haven't been hours and hours. It's been like an hour and a half.
Oh, I can do that. I'm remembering the old.
No, I mean, I think that we wouldn't budget more than three hours.
We did it in about 90 minutes last year.
So the best time for that to happen would be afternoon on a Saturday for me.
Okay.
Post 1:00 or 2:00, if that would be possible.
Other thoughts, days of the week, times of the day?
I'm fine with a Saturday afternoon, or as long as it's not the second week of the month if we do it at night, because, yeah, doesn't work so well. Too many meetings.
When do you usually start your workday Saturday?
Actually, I go in at 10:00, so if we want to do it really early, I could do that as well, a couple hours.
Any early risers other than myself?
Yeah, I'm fine with 8:00.
Said that, okay.
Yeah, I could do like 8:30, 10:00.
That would be better.
Okay.
And even if it ran over a little bit, that would be fine.
All right, so that's, we've got the 8:30 to 10:00 on a Saturday.
Which Saturday?
Which Saturday is the question?
Not this one.
The following Saturday, and I'm usually not the spoiler, but
15th doesn't work for you?
It is my Easter weekend, and I will be in church Saturday morning, so.
Right. It's not Orthodox Easter, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the 22nd?
I'm fine with the 22nd.
That works.
That is not an early morning one for me.
I can't do the 29th. I have a planning board webinar all day.
What about the afternoon on the 22nd?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It's up earlier than that.
What about May 6th?
Well, let me go back at the 22nd. I believe I can make work. Yeah.
So 8:30 on the 22nd?
I will double-check, but I'm pretty sure.
So I'm fine with the 22nd.
Mr. Dean, are you?
Yes, I'm good for that day.
Okay, so do we want to do the 22nd, and if Julie can't make it, do we want to go for the 6th? Or wait until the next meeting? I mean, it's up to everyone.
When will you know, Selectwoman Gilman?
Tonight.
Tonight?
I just can't remember the schedule.
I can't meet the 6th, but I can make the 22nd. Not that it has anything to do with me in the corner, but just letting you know.
No, actually, it would be
My twin's birthday is
No, we want Town Manager's office with both the
So you're available the 22nd?
I am, yeah, I'll do.
Let's just
Yeah, we'll just stick with that.
Make it, then we'll reset it.
Fair enough.
Start time?
8:30 AM?
And where, Kier?
I was thinking the senior center for this.
That's where we've done
Yeah, we've had, that venue in the past seems to work pretty well, so.
Are we sure it's available? Well, it doesn't matter.
We'll double-check that.
We used a lot lately, I've noticed, yeah.
And, Mr. Dean, and for you and Melissa to work on, I really liked, you know, I know we had Primex sort of facilitate and moderate the meeting, but if we could follow that pattern, I thought that worked very well last year.
Okay. Great, we'll reach out.
They don't have to come, but I mean, if they could just help us out.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. If the board would indulge, we have staff here, and we have quite a few credits and exemptions. If we could pause those for a minute and maybe have Mr. Sharples and Chief Wilking speak to their points, would let them go home? He lives closer, Dave, so you can go first.
You can allow that, well.
I'm glad I'm not asking for money tonight.
We're all glad you're not asking for money, too. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm here, you know, indirectly related to the landfill, well, the solar array at the landfill, but before I get into that, I just want to give you a quick update on that. It is excited, exciting to see that the voters overwhelmingly passed that Warren article to fund the delta on the new solar array. I started immediately I started immediately, and we've had to have the contract reviewed by Legal, our third-party consultant, and Primex, our insurance company. And we're working with, I think, three attorneys. So we're working diligently on that. We should have some buttoned up, the contract buttoned up shortly. And once we do, we plan, I'll be before you to hopefully ask them to sign off on that contract, shooting for April seventeenth, but a lot of it's out of my hands. So, but that's what I'm pushing for. Anyway, the reason why I'm here tonight is regarding the solar array indirectly because I recently became aware of some rulemaking by DES regarding landfills. Specifically, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Waste Management Division has kicked off a rulemaking effort that will focus on New Hampshire's Solid Waste Rules 800, which are landfill and permitting requirements. I attached a portion of a presentation from DES that highlights their ideas under consideration. And particularly concerned when we saw it is as identified on page seventeen. It's not seventeen pages, but the pages are identified in the presentation. And it talks about prohibition of permanence, prohibiting permanent structures. So I did contact the Waste Management Division at DES and spoke with Jamie Colby, a senior permit manager in solid waste management. While she assured me that the intent of this provision was not to prohibit solar arrays as she viewed them as temporary structures, she said the intent was to prohibit buildings. However, we both agreed that the language could be made clearer, and Exeter should submit a comment letter to that effect, making sure our position is known, even though she was very positive and said, no, no, that's, you know, we're looking at buildings, but just to be sure. So I asked Kristen Murphy, who penned a letter, and I'm before you tonight to ask for your endorsement. I did provide in the, I did provide a suggested motion below for your convenience, and I put as written or as amended in the event that, you know, you propose it as written or you make amendments. And I'll just briefly read the letter. It's to Jamie Colby of the New Hampshire Waste Management Division. It's regarding public input on proposed changes to administrative rules for solid waste. The town of Exeter appreciates the opportunity to offer comments in advance of formal rulemaking, and our hopes, our concerns can be addressed early in the process. Based on the slides presented in association with the March thirteenth, 2023 public input session, we would like to comment specifically on ENV SW 807 and the consideration of prohibiting permanent structures on top of closed landfills. We request the future rules very clearly and specifically define what uses are considered a prohibited permanent structure. We, like many of our neighboring communities, feel infrastructure for energy development such as solar array and associated equipment are compatible post-closer uses. We feel that they could be sited safely at these locations, enabling these sites to become an asset to communities without negative results. We therefore request the future rules not move to prohibit solar development and associated structures either intentionally or specifically or unintentionally through vague language. We appreciate the opportunity for early input and hope this recommendation is incorporated into your rulemaking process. Sincerely, the Select Board, Exeter, New Hampshire, and signed by Russell Dean on behalf of the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Russ, you are fine with this, right?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. If, you know, it's up to the board. If you want to have the chair sign, that's.
But the draft is, is, yes, that's where I was going with that. I just wanted to make sure because you're signing it for us.
Yeah. Okay. This is why you're such a great town planner. The fact that you caught this, I'm very appreciative. And we by all means shouldn't do this.
Agreed.
I appreciate that, but I got an email.
Well, you're on the right list.
I guess, yeah, I guess, you know, if I wasn't who I was, they might not have sent it to me, but I can't take the credit. Thank you.
This is really interesting that they had this public input session before the House and Senate or governor considered their new ideas for setbacks of new landfill. Because they're already making rules about it, but that's not the topic of this conversation. I think that I totally agree with sending the letter.
Okay. If there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to have the select board authorize the town manager to sign the comment letter on behalf of the select board regarding public input on proposed changes to administrative rules for solid waste dated April third, 2023, as written.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Mr. Sharples.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Before you step away, I'm going to embarrass you again. If the chairman indulges me, I am not going to give my report, but I highly recommend everyone watch the planning board meeting from March 23rd. It was our first installment. We all felt like we were back in school. I look at pens completely differently now, I will tell you. And you will tell when you watch this meeting how excited our planner is about doing this process. And it's the first of others, but I sat there going through it. We had trivia, we had all kinds of fun. It was a fun night. But this is something that, listening to our town planner and the interaction with the planning board, this is something that, this isn't just for the voters. This is for our kids, our community. The learning curves was just incredible. It was really exciting. So, thank you, Mr. Sharples. We all appreciate, I'm sure I can say that, we all appreciate your work and your effort.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I am kind of following up on that. I have a question that's, again, not related to what you came here for. But I was, now I forget what I was going to ask you. Oh, I was listening to the new special committee on housing that the speaker set up at the House. They've had a couple introductory meetings. And one of the things that was discussed early on was the, I think it's what Dover's doing with the incentives for paying for conservation land? I forget what the, it's not, I forget what the word for it is, but somebody gets development rights and a density right.
TDRs, transfer of development rights.
Is that something that you're considering in the zoning ordinance? Or is that a questionable practice?
We, no, it's not a questionable practice. You, it's, you have a sending and a receiving zone.
Right.
So the idea is you give development rights. Everyone has development rights across the community. And say a developer doesn't want to or wants to put his land in conservation, he can put his land in conservation, but there's a certain density associated with that land. So he gets that density out of it. Say it's ten units. Then it's kind of like a market deal. He can take that, put in the transfer density, and actually sell it to another developer in a receiving zone. He's in the sending zone, and he sends those ten units down into the receiving zone. So it's basically transferring density rights, development rights of one parcel to another. What we've done through the zoning, and we're going to work through the planning board, is in areas where we'd like to see development, there's kind of three limit, main limiting factors of development. It's, I'm not going to get into it too much, but it's density, it's parking, and it's height. So there's always three limiting factors. And one, you're going to bump up into one of them before you hit the other one. So it's like, you almost don't need three, because they just kind of, you know, you have height restricted, and you can, you know, you can park. You're restricted to thirty-five feet of height, and you have to have a certain amount of parking per unit. Then, then you can get the density you get. So we kind of removed density in our zoning amendment. So if you do that, then you don't really have any density to transfer, you know, in the area. So we kind of looked at that. It's on the table, though. We're going to move through the planning board, and I guess before the next vote, anything and everything will be discussed and evaluated.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You're making us all look bad.
I feel like I haven't seen you in a long time.
I apologize, I missed the last meeting. I wanted to take a minute and welcome Nancy back. Congratulations on the win. And Dan, it's been a long time, but select woman, Valanger and Shatterin, pleasure having you back. It's always fun picking on Nico whenever I'm here. Missed the chair. I didn't expect to speak. I'm just hanging with the cool kids. But I did submit a memo to Russ. He and I had a really nice conversation a week or two ago, about an hour. And we talked a lot about equipment and delays, and the memo speaks to itself. The COVID era has kind of continues to thwart efforts to get equipment. We're seeing supply chain issues. They've been well spoken of. We don't think it continue. But what we're seeing in the fire industry in general, the apparatus, like the engine that was approved in '22 for 650,000, is sheer volume. You just had a great discussion tonight on ARPA funds. Exeter is not the only community that received over a million dollars of 1.6 in ARPA. So what's happened is many communities have seen this money as a good way to move the ball forward on perhaps a fire engine that would have been very costly to a small town. That sheer volume has created enormous queues. When we signed a contract for the engine in '22, it was believed that the engine would be delivered nineteen months out. Now, in my tenure as in the fire service, not just your chief, nineteen months is huge. Usually, it's three hundred and thirty months, three hundred and thirty days, eleven months, twelve months. Nineteen was off the chart. And when I received a phone call and Russ and I chatted, that that's been pushed out to twenty-four months. It's like, what in the world? So, and basically, they thought they were, not being funny, but you're going to get your engine the same time you get the ambulance. Really? So I just threw it to, just so you have a, you're on the same page that we are. We have received our breathing apparatus. They're in service. The firefighters are using them as we speak. It was, it's been the last thirty days that we received the training and all that. So we're using all that. We have received the F-250 pickup truck that was approved in '22. Harry Lindsay actually has it today, probably through tomorrow. He's finishing up fitting the rear of it so we can work out of the rear. So this is fairly recent, that one.
Great.
Let's jump to '23. The voters at the '23 town meeting approved the replacement of our old Jeep Patriot. Assistant Chief Pizon was instrumental in finding a leftover '22 hybrid Ford Explorer down in Massachusetts. We grabbed it quickly, thanks to Russ, thanks to Cory. We got it paid for it quickly, and it's behind the fire station.
Terrific.
Problem is, it's black. And I love our law enforcement brethren. I just don't want a black car to get confused between fire because it looks like the police chief's unmarked black crew. So the money we save by buying a '22, I'm going to spend on having it wrapped. It's going to look maroon, just like the rest of the fleet. So you'll see fire, you'll see PD. We're going to get that and get it, get outfitted.
You got to stay on brand. You got to stay on brand.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Bright fire truck red, or at least maroon, making it work. So that leads us to the engine and the ambulance. We are still planning on, I was just chatting with them today, on trade value. Right now, they're, the contracts are the contracts. We have signed contracts. The biggest hurdle, the fire truck manufacturers are having, is Cummins is the only diesel manufacturer currently putting engines out for this type of apparatus. Cummins is telling the dealers that they're changing their model. Doesn't make any difference from an ISL nine to a 10. That's a significant cost increase. So if we can get our truck under, either have the engine purchased, and it's not our job to do, or we will see no cost increases to the engine. The contract's the contract. The concern they're having is they made an offer for our old engine in trade. So we need to make sure that the old engine remains serviceable so that it has some value in trade. That being said, over the next year, because we're talking '24 now, April-ish, that we're going to incur costs for an engine that we really thought we would replace by the end of this year. Shouldn't be a budget buster, but they're more than we anticipated. So we'll make it work. But again, we just wanted to, you know, just offer a quick memo so you know where we are. Otherwise, that, steady she goes. Assistant Town Manager already mentioned staffing. You know, we're going to experience the same. Everybody used to want to be a fireman. It was a cool job. Now we're having trouble recruiting people in the fire service and law enforcement. So I just think it's where we are.
Terrific. Well, thank you for the update.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've been on the sidelines for the last three-plus years, but I wanted to thank you and your team for all that you did during the pandemic. Even though I was on the sideline, I was watching, and I'm very appreciative of everything that you all did.
Well, thank you so much. I'll make sure we pass that along. We have a great team, and I know we've interacted many, many, many years ago at different levels. But I think the leadership team we've created with myself and Justin Pizon and the deputy chiefs in their positions have really come together, many hands make light work. And I think I'm excited about the future of the department and the goals that you set, obviously reflect on what we can do to help achieve those goals. And earlier in the year, we also produced goals, both fire and EMS. So the town manager and assistant manager have those. Hopefully, we can incorporate some of those into the town's overall goals. But thank you for your kind words, and I'll pass them along. Congrats, back on the board, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So, Madam Clerk, we will pivot back to you.
Alrighty.
Long list here, but you're very talented at grouping these motions together.
Two things. One, I had it up on my computer so I could enlarge it for my aging eyes. And now it's frozen, so I'm going to be using, scrutinizing the small paper. So first, I'd like to say I'm going to do the first page first and not like the amounts on the first page.
Understood.
And then there's some of the same amounts on the second page, but I'm going to group those in a different motion, so I don't have to flip back and forth.
Whatever's easier for you, this is what I'll do, so.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve disability exemptions in the amount of $125,000 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 257. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 611. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 77. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 262. And MAP 104, lot 79, unit 217.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $236,251 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 94, lot 22. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 321. MAP 5, lot 102, unit 8. MAP 32, lot 12, unit 25. MAP 68, lot 6, unit 147. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 338. MAP 104, lot 37. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 903. MAP 73, lot 36. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 310. MAP 87, lot 8, unit C24. Excuse me. MAP 54, lot 4, unit 63. MAP 64, lot 4. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 6. MAP 68, lot 6, unit 631. MAP 54, lot 4, unit 20. MAP 74, lot 45. MAP 64, lot 105, unit 48. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 405. MAP 87, lot 8, unit C16. And MAP 65, lot 5.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes?
Okay. Next, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $183,751 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 2. MAP 62, lot 95. MAP 72, lot 108. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 1,001. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 401. MAP 74, lot 11. MAP 87, lot 8, unit C2. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 135.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $152,251 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 411. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 81018. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 286. MAP 87, lot 8, unit C20. MAP 65, lot 124, unit 27. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 959. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 143. And MAP 65, lot 58.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Mr. Chair, I move to deny elderly exemptions for the following properties. MAP 74, lot 10. MAP 73, lot 246. And MAP 64, lot 105, unit 6.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Did you get the whole page?
You did.
Okay. To continue in elderly exemptions, Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions for, in the amount of $236,251 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 267. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 605. MAP 61, unit 15. I'm sorry, MAP 61, lot 15. And MAP 104, lot 79, unit 911. And MAP 104, lot 79, unit 802.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $183,751 for the tax year 2023 and for the following properties. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 114. MAP 87, lot 8, unit C23. MAP 103, lot 15, unit 2. MAP 64, lot 105, unit 35. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 1,002.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $152,251 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 89, lot 14. MAP 64, lot 105, unit 43. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 232. MAP 152, lot, MAP 52, lot 84, unit 10. And MAP 74, lot 127.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve veterans credits in the amount of $500 each for the following, tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 13. MAP 63, lot 106. MAP 103, lot 15, unit 4.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 110, lot 2, unit 11 in the amount of $171.54 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 55, lots 56, unit 2 in the amount of $5,118.30 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 47, lot 4 in the amount of $11,783.48 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
I move to approve solar exemptions for MAP 71, lot 65 in the amount of $10,000 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
I move to approve solar exemption for MAP 17, lot 2, unit 1 in the amount of $19,500 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Mr. Dean, a land use change taxes money, we accept?
Yes.
Yay!
Revenue to the town.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept land use change taxes for the following properties in the amount of $30,000 for the tax year 2023. MAP 13, lot 1, unit 2. And MAP 13, lot 1, unit 3.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Well done.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well done. Okay.
Can we explain that April 1st is a deadline to apply for all these things? So that's why we're getting this whole big lump at one point?
Perfect. Back to permits and approvals. Mr. Dean, do you need a motion to on the, on the DRA appropriations?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to sign.
I would entertain a motion. You sign or we sign, right?
You sign it and a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration Report of Appropriations. S232 for the year 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes? And, Mr. Dean, this is just a advertisement for a public notice for our April 5th informational meeting on the Community Power Coalition.
Right.
And that is in this room, correct? April 5th, 7 o'clock. There'll also be a Zoom option?
Yes.
And I received my card in the mail since we last met.
I did too. Me too.
Out of curiosity, have there been any inquiries to your office or?
It's been quiet so far. So hopefully all the inquiries are going to Community Power.
We've done a, we and they, particularly they have done a nice job advertising this. We reached out to folks.
Banner coming into town and Founder's Park. That's great.
They had a nice booth at the election as well.
Yes.
It's the Aggregation Committee and the CPCNH has designed and made all the materials that are what I want. Patterns or...
Yeah. It's been tremendous job.
Yeah, I can't wait.
Okay. Mr. Dean, Town Manager's report, please.
Okay. A few things tonight. One is obviously a lot of time has been taken up by the Swayze issues and the siphons issues. So I don't need to repeat those. We all are conscious of what those are. The, I did, I was able to attend a health trust meeting on March 28th. That went well. That was a full board of directors meeting. We have been working through signing the human services contracts for the agencies and providing that funding to them. So that has been an ongoing exercise by our office. We met at the train station last week with Steve Corcoran from Amtrak and an MBTA group about the busing logistics from April 22nd to May 7th. That seems to be going very well. At this point, we're working on an arrangement where the buses would go through the Bridges Brothers property. But that's a situation that we're working with the property owner to facilitate with ourselves on that. So that's good news. The Monahan project has broken ground in Epping Road. If you've driven by, you've seen that that has happened, which is, which is good news. Also, the Town Hall work group convened today. We had a good meeting and expect to have a follow-up meeting. That is all things Town Hall, including the future of the building and so forth. We do have an interview slated for the DPW director position for Friday, which is good. We have a prospective candidate, which is good to have these days. And Joe Saludo, one of our longtime police officers, recently retired and just wanted to wish Joe well on his retirement and all his years of service to the town. That's what I had.
Just for Selectman Sharpton's reference, can you just quickly tell him who's on the Town Hall committee?
Yes, it's Anthony Tony Calandrello, Ms. Gilman. Ms. Roy has been assisting with that. We are waiting for an energy committee rep for that committee. And Julie, who am I forgetting? Oh, Jeff Beck, I'm sorry, from Maynard.
We're going to involve the other committees, like facilities is really very important. And Heritage Commission, HDC, will have something, but we're not anticipating any changes to the outdoors. But the first step is to get an historic building survey. So we know what are the, what's there? What's a resource that keeps the identity of the building and what things can we, excuse me, give and take on? And so before, so we were talking about how just issuing that, the Arts Commission had already gotten a quote from a firm that specializes in this kind of work. And they're going to come to us on the 17th to ask for appropriation from the Town Hall revolving fund. It's around between $8,000 and $9,000, I think. And if we get, when we get that done first, then we can start going forward with the planning for the future uses. And that's when we'll bring in all the other committee members for their pieces.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Sure. Select Board Committee reports. We'll start with Selectman Willinger.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay. So first, thank you Joanna, because you got your meeting minutes in on the planning board. And it was much easier than me going through all my notes to do my report. So thank you. So back to my excitement over the planning board meeting that we had March 23rd. Really encouraged people to watch it. We had no application. So our meeting was solely on series one, as Mr. Sharples put it. The first series is on undeveloped land. I'm just going to hit some high points because...
Can I just, so this is Mr. Sharples' attempt to explain zoning to?
It is.
Great. That wasn't, that wasn't clear in your comments, so I just...
Well, I was trying not to get too much into my report, but okay. Nope, it's fine. So I don't need to say that line. Okay, so undeveloped land. Some of the benefits, flood protection, air and water quality, wildlife habitat. Yeah. And also the emotional, social aspects of having our undeveloped land. And he talked about bats and I just, I could go on probably for a whole hour. And, but hunting and fishing and Mr. Cameron, the planning board rep, talked about, you know, not just the positive aspects, but to be aware of our, the recreation and respecting it and making sure we're not doing things to harm our conservation land. And, let's see, shade, shade from the shade trees into the ponds and how that helps with our, our animals, our wildlife, trout and salmon. I couldn't even do this justice, trying to keep it quick. And I got a little sidetracked there. But I do ask that people watch us. And then the next one will be on the benefits of developed land. The trivia was, what is our highest building in town? And it's a toss-up between two. Academy, library and the hospital, the back side of the hospital. And there was also, so there were no applications, but there was an issue with the Monahan. Not an issue. I don't think that's the right word that I should have used. But when that was approved by the planning board, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation asked to weigh in on where the driveway was going to go. And two years later, they kept telling Mr. Sharples that, nope, nope, they're not going to weigh in. And then they sent a letter. And they were concerned about the driveway and where it was. But it would not change the approval. So it didn't affect it, but there was a little concern and Mr. Sharples had a pretty strong meeting with the Department of Transportation. So they're trying to work together because the problem is the exit nine. We have a lot of accidents there and it's in the state control. So they're working on trying to see what we can do about getting that intersection updated, maybe in the future. So that's a work in progress, but yeah, it's needed. So anyway. So that was my only meeting.
Okay.
And of course, we have the Community Power and my housing, our housing meeting is next Friday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Selectman Gilman.
Yes, I met first time with the Arts Commission. And they have a really interesting project that they're starting to put together or making plans for and researching materials, et cetera. But it's for street painting, crosswalks. And they're looking to have the events, maybe more than one, start out on the west edge of town, around Front Street, on either side of the tracks where art up front is and a couple other locations. The discussion, there were some examples from Amesbury, I think, that are really quite interesting. Signing an artist a space or or a piece of it and signing a piece to another artist or giving an artist the whole thing, call for artists or, you know, juried thing, groups, you know, like high school kids. The first thing that I talked about to try it out before we start blocking off the streets or asking for police control was to paint the basketball pad at the kids park on Winter Street. And we thought it'd be a good, good place to start. They'll come in and ask us about it. Because then we were talking, they had been talking to the high school artist teacher and that the high school kids would be really interested in helping us set up prep and, you know, figure out, you know, help us with the project. And, and I said that, well, it'd be a good place for them to start because they can paint it all white as, as you're priming a canvas. So that will be coming, more details on that will be coming.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to reiterate what everybody's already said about the Community Power Coalition info session on Wednesday. It's, there's a lot to know. There's a lot of good news. The price is just over 15 cents for the basic package that everybody in the town will get. There are a couple of exceptions, but they're easily explained. And so the session will be here at 7:00. I participated in a certified local government grant meeting for the Heritage Commission, which we are being invited to apply or to finish the application. And when Melissa said that this grant for the rec department was going in six months, while my application is due at the end of June. And it will give me like a year to do this project. And it's just a historical survey, not nearly as complex as what's going on there. And I know there was something else, but it's gone. I was going to give a House report. I think that the next meeting, I'm going to start doing it from the podium because I might tend to get a little partisan what's going on now. Last, or two weeks ago...
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I know. Two weeks ago, when the House met for two days, we went through, well, almost 100 bills and tabled half of them, most of them in the Education Committee. And it's really too bad because, not that I want to sit there for three days instead of two or more, but that's what I'm being, what I'm elected to do. And I'm elected to work on a committee and go through the bills that are proposed and bring them to the floor with a, with a recommendation. And we had so many tables that it just did away with three months worth of work or more for legislators, legislators out there. If I were the Education Committee, I would be really upset. So crossovers happen and that means anything that passed. And I had a document printed out and we can post it, although we skipped every other page. Somehow, I don't know. It doesn't look like my document, but I'll get it to you. That shows you how close the votes are and the different topics. There was only one municipal and county bill that came forward and it was for adding, allowing or allowing property, all properties on... allowing property, all properties on, didn't have the amendment. Allowing all residential properties to, I've got, um, to have two accessory dwelling units, instead it was just the one that's permitted right now. And that one was tabled. We tabled a awful lot of them too. So how many did we actually act on? I don't know, about thirty? It was really, uh, an amazing day. So crossovers, crossovers happen. Anything that you see on the document that, um, was not tabled or, um, or failed, ITL, and it's being to legislate, um, has gone to the Senate now. And all the Senate bills are now coming to us. And I don't anticipate that I'll have a whole lot coming from the Senate, uh, for municipal county, uh, municipality, except for the Housing Champions Program, which is, was proposed last year, but it was set onto, uh, or attached to another bill, which was a little more controversial, which is one I sponsored this year, which failed. So I'm glad it got separated. And this one, it, uh, urges towns or incentivizes towns to, uh, use all the tools possible that the state currently has for, um, building attainable, affordable housing. I forget which, which, uh, I think they used affordable housing in the, in the, um, bill. By doing things like adopting a seventy-nine E area, adopting a one sixty-two K revitalization zone, TIF districts, um, a couple other things that we've already done. So, and if, if this passes and the governor signs it, we can get right in there and say, here we are, Housing Champions, and, um, the incentive is that you'll be put up to the top of the list and some infrastructure grams from the state. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Selectwoman Cowan.
I have nothing to add.
Selectwoman Chartran?
Um, I have a, uh, first meeting with the Sustainability Advisory Committee tomorrow night.
Terrific.
Uh, seven o'clock in this room. It's actually a joint meeting of Sustainability Advisory and the Energy Committee.
Fantastic.
So I'll be there.
All right. Thank you. I did not have any, um, committee, uh, meetings. However, Selectwoman Belanger and I did attend the March twenty-fourth Citizens Award.
Yes, it was wonderful.
And, uh, that's what a remarkable story that is.
What is that? C R N?
If we ever have a contentious meeting, I'd like him sitting right there. Correspondence, uh, we have the annual report from the Extra Sportsman's Club that we reviewed. Uh, Mr. Dean, the Town of Stratton Planning Board meeting that is scheduled for April fifth pertaining to the Stony Brook, uh, are we going to have representation there?
I don't know as of yet. I'm still following up on that, um, hopefully.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea if we could get somebody there.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, and I will say, so are other people going to be here for the, sorry?
Community.
Power? Because if that's the case, I will drive to Strat. I can't be in three places at once.
I already have to be in three places at once, so.
Yeah, right.
I would have loved to have.
And I look, they don't record them. They don't have them televised, so, um, I don't know. I'll get back to you, Mr. Chair, on, on which, which way I'm going that night. I, I, because I'm the rep for the Planning Board, I almost feel like I should attend the Stratton meeting.
I'd like somebody there. So, Mr. Dean, if you could find out tomorrow and let us know.
See what our options are.
Please.
Yes.
Thank you. We have a list of our, uh, Select Board, um, Committee Representation. We have a letter from the Select Board in the town of Kensington, uh, that went to, um, the community, well citing large groundwater withdrawal permitting, and this was on our recent warrant article that passed. I know the town of Kensington neighbors abutting that have some concerns. Mr. Dean, have you heard from the town of Kensington?
I have not, other than this letter.
Okay.
So.
Should we reach out to them?
Um, I think we can. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
I think the Chair would be very open to a phone call.
Very good.
Some email correspondence, Mr. Dean.
Yes, this is the notice from the CPCNH, just that the commencement of service has occurred.
Terrific. And then a Legislative Bulletin from the NHMA is also a packet. Reviewing the Board Calendar, our next meeting will be April seventeenth. We have our goal setting set for April twenty-second at eight thirty. And then moving into May, Mr. Dean, I have May fifth, May fifteenth, and possibly May twenty-second?
Yes.
Is that correct? All right. I'm sorry?
May fifth is Monday?
May.
May first.
May first.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Melissa.
I might have.
He did, but that's okay.
So the new one there is the twenty-second?
Yeah, the, um, the following Monday is Memorial Day. And looking into June, we have another holiday, so doing two in a row will help us have two meetings in June without the interference of that holiday.
Yeah. So you're right-footing it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we go into non-public, um, under RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two, A C.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectwoman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Blancher?
Aye.
And clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Jeanne Anderson, we'll be going to non-public.
Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels ninety-eight and twenty-two. Channel ninety-eight is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel twenty-two, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU sixteen and can be found on channel thirteen with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.